You keep trying, we're gonna go ahead and go. Call me in. What's that? Calling me in to order from the stand.
Here's our flag, here, right there.
You guys see it back there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, entertain a motion to declare open meetings.
Do it.
Second?
Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Open Meetings Act is on the wall back there, if you can read that. Roll call, Dr. Thor.
Yes.
Trent?
Yep.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
First, so far, excuse time to be here. Proof, proof of agenda. If they expect to add anything, we'll give us this. There's something more to add, why? Entertainer motion to approve.
Look at the agenda. Second?
Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Public comment. Do you want to speak? No? Okay. Brooke?
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna read the disclaimer then. Okay, discussion items, face coverings. Guess we gotta decide what we're gonna do and how far we're gonna go with it, or how long. Is there a person?
Christie, can you hear us? Give us some indication if you can hear us.
She must have mic in here.
You got him proud as he got this one.
I just knew she got on before we started discussing this, so we left out here.
Kyle, you still don't have any communication with Christie? Oh, I can't hear you.
Anybody hear us?
Can't hear you.
Yeah, we can all hear you, so I have to send her a message to see if she read it. I'll text her too and see if she gets on there. "I can't hear anything" is what she says.
Sounds like it's just a picture of...
Yeah, she's not moving. She's pretty still.
I bet it's not live, I bet it's frozen or something.
Well, and she technically can't participate, I would think anyway, she can't vote. Because...
She might have voted, but I don't know.
I think you got a physical present.
Maybe she mailed or wrote in. We all basically voted, but we zoomed. It's changed.
But I, I, I wanna...
Don't push that. Okay, well, Lisa's gonna show you there now, but uh... I don't know if you wanted to update us on what the Health Department says about masks, no masks.
Yeah, the Health Department just certainly strongly recommends that everybody, everybody wear a mask in public, especially when you can't social distance. And so there, you know, CDC doesn't just address obviously schools, nor does the Health Department just address schools, but that's an environment where social distancing, they recognize is really not possible. So they certainly recommend that everybody wear a mask, because it's gonna inhibit the spread. And what we know is that masks do more to protect others from you than protect yourself from others. So it makes it a little more incumbent for people to wear a mask, because I wanna protect other people. If I say, "I'll, I'll risk it," you know, "I'm not gonna, I don't want, I'm not comfortable wearing a mask, I'll, I'll risk getting it." Well, that's fine, but you also are increasing the risk of people that you're around. And in school, it's impossible to not be around people. And as we know, you know, our, our, there'll be certain circumstances where we can, where we can avoid that to a certain degree, but not, not to a degree to where we can really figure out during what classes and times of day and what circumstances do we feel we have good social distancing, and other times we don't. And so we discriminate, we need masks at this place in time, not at this place in time, it'd just be, it'd be pretty impractical. So it's, it's, it is just a good overall layer of protection. It will greatly diminish the number of people that would be quarantined. Now, we, we don't want anybody to have to be out of school for two weeks, but especially our teachers. I mean, we, to be honest, we have to protect our teachers, because if our teachers get sick, we shut the school off. So I know that we have the support of mandating that for teachers, and that's an easier decision. School boards can mandate that for teachers, and that's just, you know, the way it gets. They're not in a position to say, "Well, no, you can't make a student that." Well, yes, we can. If you wanna be employed, you're gonna work here. So I think that's an easy decision, I think that's embraced by our staff. But then I, I would, without, without polling our staff, and I don't know if Kyle and Heather necessarily would have that information, what percentage of our staff want to be protected from our students?
Because even if they ask on the students, though, if a student comes down, if they can be quarantined even though they have masks.
Potential. Now, you know, there's a series of circumstances that they'll ask you to do their contact tracing and find out, well, who, who is, who's necessarily at risk. So under my circumstances, as you know, I was here in school for two days, and then around the entire staff, very few people were wearing masks, I wasn't. But was I in close proximity to certain people for a certain amount of time? Well, the only, that only time was during lunch on Tuesday, where I recognized, well, I probably sat down for 15 minutes, and these five people were, were within six feet of me. So those were the only people that got caught up in, got caught up in that quarantine, as opposed to, well, the whole staff, I was around the whole staff for, for two days. But I wasn't gonna, you know, talking to the Health Department, they didn't think that that rose to that level that they probably all needed to be captured in that yet. So, you know, schools are on different sides of this. I think no public schools, you know, it's got a mask mandate, has now for a week, haven't been able to speak to that a little bit, you know, on how that's going and how they're managing it. I talked to Osman today, so his school close by, they don't have a mask mandate, but about 90% of their kids are wearing them.
It's recommended.
Yeah, yeah, and seems to be, I guess, more than I would have anticipated maybe two weeks or two months ago, you know, if you just said, "Well, we're just gonna encourage kids to wear them," I thought, "Well, nobody's gonna wear them." Well, I think it would, if we did encourage them to wear them. But if we've got 10 or 20% of our kids aren't wearing them, yeah, how's the Health Department gonna look at that? You know, how strong are they gonna feel about, well, if you've got 10% that aren't wearing them, you're still potentially at risk? So...
I still look back at what our plan was, even when you got it. I mean, looking back on it now, if we would've sent you home, which is what our plan was, and kept going, it would've been fun. Nobody else got it, you know? So do we need to do any more than what our original plan was?
Well, that's true, nobody got it, but the Health Department probably said the reason nobody got it is because the five people that could've been exposed to you, you know, weren't around anybody else.
But if we're gonna take temperatures every day, is anybody really gonna be exposed?
So, I mean, I, you know, I, I can support however, however strong we feel about it. If we mandate it, then there's a, a more significant management issue for our teachers and our principals to do. They have to manage it, we'll have some, you know, exceptions that people might request. We've, we've got the masks, I think, but I would expect that certain percentage of our kids would probably provide their own.
It's not their thing, it's ours.
It's theirs to manage. There's something flying around in the hallway, it looks a whole night, but Lisa, did you see the bat in the hallway?
Seriously?
Yeah. Might want us to sneak out this door.
She won't go by her own.
So...
Are there exceptions for students that have like hospital problems like that?
Yeah.
Where, you know, what, what happens if mandated, you have kids that have trouble breathing, asthma?
Yeah, see, I, I couldn't wear this thing all day, I mean, so I, so kids with asthma, kids that, there's a variety of things that they'd probably be able to get a doctor's exclusion for. Some with some anxiety issues, the younger they are, maybe the more prevalent, some exceptions might be. Lisa, maybe you could speak to some of those, or as, as a doctor, you know, where do you feel comfortable exempting a student from wearing a mask?
I think they probably, the ones that should be wearing are the kids with the asthma and kids that are a little more susceptible and stuff.
Could you state your name and credentials, please?
Lisa Montgomery, I'm a nurse practitioner here in town. The people that are at the most high risk, people who have prior conditions such as asthma and breathing problems, they're the ones that are gonna be the most, most risk, see the most symptoms. You might have kids that are perfectly healthy, you have to be okay if they did not wear them, but honestly, our, our stance is that if you wear them, if everybody wears them, it'd be ideal, there's always gonna be kids who are, for anxiety reasons, don't wanna wear them. The littler kids are gonna be a little tougher, because they're not gonna stop playing with them. I know my manager works at Howells, and she said that their kids are not mandatory, most of them are wearing them, and most of them are actually doing really well with it. They, they wear them pretty consistently when they're in the halls, where they're gonna be in transitions. When they sit at their desks, they're spaced out enough that they can take them off and put them down, so they do not have to wear them all day long, which I think is gonna be an ideal, if we could do something like that. But our stance, I think, is wear them.
At a parent ask about, just wearing over her mouth, I suppose that doesn't fly, what the Health Department? That would be, that would be so much better, if you just had to wear it in your mouth.
Your, your eyes and your nose are definitely another place you could get it, so if you wear it over your mouth, you're not protected. So, and that's a frustrating thing, it's because even this doesn't protect me if someone's stomping in my face with it.
Yeah, I, I think you and I are kind of both same parents, and I had, had some concerns too about having a daughter that to be a person who already given up, that's going to speech there anyway, and, you know, with a mask would probably inhibit a lot of progress, you know, in a, which could possibly, anyway, is there any workaround for that thing? Be able to create anything, prosthetic?
Could possibly put them in, you know, where they got enough space between them.
Hopefully, I, I don't know. I'm sure we can figure something out.
So, for, for, for certain services that some kids would need, we could easily provide a Plexiglas partition, you know, so if you've got a provider on one side of the table and a student on the other. You know, that, that's an exception, you know, that, that, that schools are making. A face shield, which doesn't provide the level of protection of a mask, and some people are somewhat comfortable, at least with clear face shield, Health Department doesn't rank it up there as, as good safety device. There are masks that are, that are clear, you know, so I mean, if we look at, we're talking about speech, and I need to see the lips and that kinda thing, but, but also, yes, just, I think there will be, and I don't know, Kyle and Heather, maybe you can speak to the amount of time during a day, for example, that students might be able to anticipate removing their mask in class. We've got some classes that just, there's no way we can social distance with the number of kids that we have. The high school would be a little different, because we have classes of, you know, six, eight, and 10 students maybe, but... So Kyle and Heather, when would you anticipate, if we've got, if we have mandated masks, when would you anticipate that students would be able to be out of their mask?
I did talk to a couple of my friends who teach both in Grand Island and in Norfolk, who have mask mandates, and talked to them about when they do their mask breaks and how they do their mask breaks. And one of the ways that they are implemented is by implementing every other row. And so as long as students are faced far enough apart in between, then every other row is allowed to take their mask off for eight minutes at a time, and this might be during seat work. So, you know, teacher's not instructing during this time, and so students are working, and so row one and three are able to take their mask off for eight minutes while they're working, and then they put them back on, and then rows two and four are able to do that. And I would see them being able to rotate and do that throughout the day at any time that they're working. Another option would be, you know, going and, and implementing as much outside learning as we possibly can. Obviously, we're not able to have every single grade level go outside throughout the entire day, but we can get some kind of schedule together that allows for elementary levels at, at times that will work, for them to go outside and have classes outside and social distance a little bit more, and that allows for mask breaks there as well. So we have to be very intentional with making sure that we're giving mask breaks. But in all of the teachers that I talked with, the biggest thing that they said is, it's all about teaching procedures. And with us coming into the school year, it's just like teaching how, how you expect them to walk down the hall, how you expect them to put away their books, how you expect them to stand in line, how you expect them to wear their mask. You know, I had one of my friends tell me that about 5% of her class were, were pretty unruly with masks, but it was the same 5% that are unruly when they're standing in line or when they're walking down the hall. And so, you know, it's the same students that you might expect to have behavior issues with, with other things. And so it's the same ones that you're going to have to retrain, you're going to have to retrain with masks. But a majority of the feedback that I received was that it was going great with masks, and that students were actually handling it much better than adults do. Because, well, at the elementary level at least, you know, kids are still at the phase that, where they want to please their teacher, and they want to do what their teacher has asked them to do, so they weren't seeing issues. Kyle?
Well, I think Heather hit the nail on the head in that i- if we do this, it's good that we're not in school yet, because it is teaching a procedure, and the fact that in, in the secondary building, passing time's gonna be a main one where kids have to have it on, that's not gonna, that's not gonna be negotiable. And then in the classroom, like Dr. Art said, we have some classes that only have six kids, and there might be enough room where they can space out for the entire class period and not wear it. There's other classes that have 25 kids in it, and so then maybe we have a small section of the room where they can spread out and get five or six of them to take their mask off, or they can go sit in the hallway when they're doing a worksheet or something and spread out for a little bit. But like Heather said, it's all built-in things that you have to do. And in our building, it would fall kinda on the teacher to have a procedure, and what meets their classroom management style best, something that they're most comfortable with, and so that's where I would kinda communicate with the teachers and let them take a lead role in that, because I want them to have something that they're comfortable with and that they can enforce.
I got a question. Mrs. Thompson, I, I continue to read the school plan, return to school plan, and both the items that you had sent out to us. And what I'm hearing now is that everybody wants mandated masks, and we've got this school plan of green, yellow, orange, red. Can we implement some words in there, yes and no? Because I have a hard time swallowing it constantly all the time with no dead end. But if we implement the school plan, let's say, green, no mask, yellow, orange, red, wear masks, until the state holds us back out of it, I would do that. I think the parents would be in favor of that, but just, just to throw a blanket match.
And that's absolutely what, what I would agree with as well. I think anytime we're in a heightened state, and those colors come directly from our Health Department, and so the, all of the information that I was sending you comes directly from the Health Department as well. So we don't just make up what color we happen to fall in for the day, or for the week. And so, you know, Kyle and I have been talking quite a bit about it, and we are kind of on the same page with what you just said. You know, if we're heightened and we're in yellow or orange, we believe that we should be wearing masks. Students and teachers should be wearing masks. If we're in green, we could see only teachers wearing masks, but we still think that teachers need to be wearing masks, and that students, it's still recommended, but not required. We think that we could go that, that step, and we probably still would have a good 50 to 75% of students that would wear them during that green. But the problem is, you know, we are kind of already behind the curve, and we're in yellow right now. If, if we don't come in taking some precautions, I don't know if we'll get to green. And that's just the reality of it.
I, I don't disagree with you, I need clarity on one other item. You had said, I think it was at the last meeting, about quarantine. Somebody come in and pause, if there was no masks, a great percentage of the populace would be quarantined if everybody was wearing masks, only the one that was infected. And where is that? I cannot find that on anything you provided to me.
So if you, one of the very first emails I sent out had a screenshot, and then there was the public health recommendation exclusion and readmittance for students and staff. On that document, on the second page, it's item D, and that's straight from the Health Department.
Do you have it all up, Heather?
Well, just tell, just tell us what it says, I don't need it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure about that.
So it talks first about close contacts, and it defines what a close contact is. But then when you go down, it tells you that if everyone was wearing the mask and they're worn properly, covering the nose, quarantine will not be automatically recommended for close contacts. And it, and it says right there that close contacts will remain in school and will be monitored twice per day. And so by monitoring it, it just means taking temperatures and then monitoring for other symptoms. And it talks about those other symptoms at the top of that document.
Of the ones involved, correct?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just the ones involved, or the general population?
Nope, it's talking about those close contacts. So again, it's talking about, you know, if it was, I'm just gonna pick on, let's say, a second grader, then we would just, so already, when second grade comes in at the beginning of the day, we check all of their temperatures at the beginning of the day, and so maybe after lunch, we would just go in with our thermometers and check the second grade a second time. So, that would give us our, our two times to monitor them.
Okay, it would just be that. Unless you, was there other kids in the hallway or something like that?
I kind of agree too, just kinda go back to that plan, that's what we had talked about earlier. You know, we got to be all in order to go to, go to mass in three, it's not mandatory. Like I said, you know, the plan would've worked already, and to me, as long as it's working, well, I don't know. I mean, I'd like to get everybody in school and get a couple weeks into this. So I guess I'm all for everybody to wear a mask for a couple weeks and see.
Why not, why not make it optional when you got any yellow? You're starting to have quarantine events, and kids are starting to be getting this quarantine events, so it's all... The thing I don't get about this whole COVID deal, is if you're outside, you can't get it. You can go to concerts and stuff outside, you don't have to wear a mask, you can go to recess and not wear a mask, but you go sit in the classroom, you have to wear a mask. I guess I don't, I don't, I don't get it.
There are outdoor arenas with concerts that are requiring masks. So I don't, I don't know that...
Yeah, yeah, we said the risk level's down quite a bit when you go outdoors, and, you know, they talk a lot about maybe windows, having windows open in your classroom, if you have, having your doors open, and just, anyway, you can increase the amount of air circulation or fresh air, it's helpful, that decreases the risk. I don't, you know, I think you can, you can still get it, but, yeah, there's just, you know, Trent, that's a good point. You know, there are certain things that we do as part of school, activities being one of them, which will increase the level of risk, because kids are gonna come in...
Football game?
Yeah, they're gonna sweat on each other, they're gonna breathe on each other.
You go behind the bleachers at a football game, like all them kids that you go try it, they don't wear masks if they play football, right?
No.
So then they go to school, they have to wear it, what's the difference?
Because then they're protecting everybody else around them, and getting it. That's the difference right there.
Yeah, going to school is different than, you know, they've got a choice, they make a choice to go to a, to go to, you know, some, some game. Now, we could mandate masks at our activities as well, some schools are considering that. I know, we're not gonna do that outdoors, we, we may, you know, indoors, yeah, but we're gonna try to social distance our bleachers and such, but, you know, people have to, you know, assume some risk and make some prudent decisions about protecting themselves and others. But it's once from school, from A to three 27, we have just a whole lot more responsibility and authority to, to protect. But, but yeah, do school activities, does it look that different to you on that?
I know what you're talking about, Trent, because I don't even know if that's school property, if they're planned on, so they have any restriction to that. You can't play over there, you have to wear a mask, because they're on the city property, you know?
You can go to the pool, but they can run around town anyway all day, you know? I can't be doing other things, but it, the preconceived notion anyway, or I guess, misinformation is that these things are protecting me from other people, that's, would be disstated, that's wrong. I'm wearing this right now, because I've been contacting a lot of people, a lot of kids, anyway, the last two days. I'm protecting you from me. I, I'm not scared of you exposing me, I'm protecting you from me right now. I think being considerate like that, I think is something that needs to be advertised to the parents, and that kids need to wear these masks, and we protect the neighbors and classmates. I don't, I think what Jim suggested anyway, or what Heather suggested, Kyle, wearing yellow, reminds me a little bit of it. Or green, when you can relax it. And I think you're gonna have more parents anyway that are gonna be more out to mask, to mask for kids in green levels, if they know that they're gonna be able to have breaks during the day. I guess I need to thought of that, anyway, they do, these kids are gonna be able to take their masks off if they're spread out in classrooms.
I mean, there's, there's pretty green and yellow, it's pretty significant, I mean, people can't even come in the building if we're yellow. You know, limited visitation, even on green, appointments only, I mean, there's just nothing to jump between. I guess, I guess my, my question is, I read today that we had an uptick beginning in Pierce County. I was under the assumption we were already orange, you know, but we're not, we have a...
That'll get updated again on Wednesday, so like right now, Heather and I were just talking today, what was it, two weeks ago? We were at 1.25, is that what the number was at?
1.20.
1.20, and so then this week, or last week, it jumped then to 1.55, so we made a quarter of a percent jump. And so if we were to make that same jump again this week, that puts us at 1.80, so we're within two weeks of being orange, because at 2.0, you go to an orange. So I mean, yeah, we're already trending in a bad direction, so if that keeps going, and we're not even schooling session. So that's just the community that we don't have a whole lot of control over. So we can do our part to try and keep that number down as much as possible, because when we go to orange, we're looking at a hybrid model of education, and that's something that we don't want either. I mean, we want kids in our buildings, so we're gonna... And that's something that we don't want either. I mean, we want kids in our buildings, so, um, we're gonna do the steps, I think, that are gonna keep us in that situation and help make our kids' education a better setting.
That's a county color, not a town color, right?
Correct. It's based off of Pierce County.
So it's not saying it's playing you. It could be different though, Pierce County. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, if you have a spike in Pierce Manor, that's dialed. So I think that would be worth the discussion. I mean, if, if the trend for Pierce County continues towards orange, you know, I think we, uh, it's our responsibility is to, to really drill down and find out where that spike is. If it's locally, then, then that.
I would say to this point, we've done our share.
So Mr. Schmidt, with your, your comment about the two weeks to be into orange, if it continues on its current rate, uh, with its current rate of where it's at, let's just say it, it, it levels off. We probably wouldn't see a downkick to the yellow for more than two weeks anyway, would we?
So Heather could hit on this a little bit more, cause she talked to the health department directly about it. But if I understood her right, uh, the numbers start going down as people come down off of quarantine, because that plays into it. And then also positive results, as soon as they come down off of having to be isolated, then that's gonna move the number down as well. Am I right with that, Heather?
Yeah. So all of those, all of those factors play into it. Um, the number of available hospital beds plays into it, um, how many positive numbers there are. Um, unfortunately, you know, as people are coming off of isolation, we're still having more people test positive as well. So it's kind of leveling off. Um, and then the number of close contacts that each person has plays into it because, um, those people could end up testing positive. Um, but from what I was told, um, the number of close, okay, so for example, Kyle and I were both listed as close contacts for Dr. Earl. Um, but we will come off tomorrow. Um, and since we both will come off and not have tested positive, then, um, we will come off in a positive light for that. Um, so there are, there are a lot of things that factor into, um, into our color and into, um, the health department's, um, numbers and how they're, they're factoring things, um. It's pretty cool how they have it all laid out for each county, actually.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess what I was trying to do is get a cushion. Dr. Earl had man, mentioned two weeks, you know, ten days, wearing masks when school starts, just to be safe. So I guess what I'm hearing from you is we probably won't see a return to yellow until that timeframe anyway, at best, return to green, return to green, I mean.
I don't, I, I couldn't say.
It might be green by Wednesday. I mean, I don't know what happened, whether, how they look at the manner of people and they take them all.
They're out of the county.
Do they all come off the list?
They mean technically?
I, I guess, I don't know.
What do you think that, if they've been moved, if they've moved out, I mean, do they still count? I don't know.
I think that's a simple way to do it though. It, it, on Wednesday, is it every week, right? Uh, Heather?
Yeah.
Every week, Wednesday, they update it. So if Pierce County goes to green, we go to mask recommended.
Yeah.
And it, and it, so, so folks know, if, you know, this is, isn't an arbitrary, open-ended, you know, uh, decision. And who gets to make it when, you know, when we relax it and so on, well, you probably can't go wrong following the health department's rules. Nor should you put yourself in a position.
They're not mandate masks.
What's that?
They're not mandate masks.
Well, they recommend it, right? And so who are we to, to say, well, thank you professionals, health professionals, but, uh, we're not gonna follow your recommendation?
We can recommend them, like they did.
Yeah?
We'll have another board meeting in three weeks. It was two.
So if we're sitting in yellow and we have recommended mask and everybody in a classroom is wearing a mask except for one kid and that one kid tests positive, anybody who's in close contact with him would be recommended by the health department to quarantine when we were in yellow, because not everybody is in masks. If we move back to green and we look at that and we have that same situation, then more likely the health department's gonna be okay with us not quarantining those kids that are in masks unless it is a direct contact for over a certain period of time. Am I right, Heather? Whereas if we're all in masks, well, I got you in mid-journing there.
Yeah, sorry.
But if, but if we're all in masks, then when we're in yellow and orange, then if we have close contact, we still can have those kids be monitored at school for signs and symptoms.
So the health department sent out, um, seating charts and they are. They are so detailed, um, and, and, um, pretty, yeah. So we can look at them and break it down and say, you know, if student X is wearing a mask and comes down positive, then, and there was three feet in between, then all these kids have to quarantine. If student B comes out positive and there was six feet, then all these kids have to quarantine. If student A is wearing a mask and everyone else is wearing a mask, then all these kids have to, or nobody has to. Um, but basically they sent out, I think it's fifteen or sixteen pages of different scenarios, um, that we would have to look at. But if we are all in masks, then we don't even have to look at them. Because if they come out, if a student comes out positive, but everybody's wearing a mask, we don't have to quarantine.
And one in yellow also?
If you are, if you're both masked up.
And they're worn properly.
And, yeah, if they're.
That's what it says. It must be worn properly. That's the next thing.
But, but like I was saying, I mean, I've talked to two kindergarten teachers and a first grade teacher. And, you know, I know that everyone's saying that those are the grades that are going to be the hardest, but those are the teachers that have said it's the easiest. Um, because it comes down to just, just training them, just showing them, just telling them why it's important to wear them. And showing them how to wear them. Once you tell kids why it's important, you know, we don't want you to get sick, we don't want anyone else in the class to get sick. And showing them how to wear them, and, you know, if it's falling down, we're gonna tie a knot behind the ear and make it a little bit easier for you. And just doing those little fixes. Those are, I mean, I just think we are underestimating our kids by saying they're too young and they're not gonna do it.
I have two counts. One of them, I got preschool grandchild and a kindergarten grandchild, and they both love wearing their masks. I mean, they're excited to go to school first day with their masks and it hasn't been a problem whatsoever. And the only I look at is, you look at young kids that have to have glasses, you know, they, they get them, they've got them for a week or two and it's just part of their day. I mean, it's just part of their body. And I think masks, you know, I, I understand if you have glasses, they can see better, so it, you know, it's a reason to wear them. I think they'll be used to them and I don't think it'll be a problem, other than like you say, that five percent of kids that, you know, like everything, but you're gonna have that in the middle of it.
And then it just comes down to the training, you know, and, and once you offer those mask breaks and, um, have those alternate environments. And if, if you have a class that you can spread out far enough, then they're going to have those built-in mask breaks anyway. Um, and I really do feel like coming into the school year, um, it could be a lot easier as, as a first day procedure type thing, since that's when you're teaching all the procedures anyway.
Well, I think we gotta get kids back into school. We gotta get two, three, four weeks into this thing, whatever it takes to get them here, to get them here and then adjust as we go. You know, worst thing I know could happen is they come to school, they'll say you don't have to wear a mask and maybe later we're back here deciding, okay, how am I gonna shut school down for? Go to a prom, this is party or what? And we could always back off.
Yeah, I, I don't like having to mandate the masks, but it makes it so much simpler and we're already started behind the eight ball, you know, with our situation here. I just don't.
It's, I know it seems like it's a big deal to some parents, but I, and I know fighting kids, you know, kindergartners and whatever else, but it really isn't. It's an inconvenience. It is. But when you consider the consequences, it really isn't that big, you know, we aren't asking for a lot. And I, ninety-five percent of the parents that I've interacted with, have told me to go and do whatever it takes to get kids back in school.
That's what I was gonna say.
It, you know, whatever it takes, if they have to get these, you know, I've got a nephew, he's a kindergartner and he's a little bit of a handful, isn't he, Dr. Earl? You know, yeah, you know, anyway, and, you know, they, they figured out that, you know, depending on the day, the superhero gator that he's gonna wear anyway, you know, then you, that, you came with it. It's like Halloween every day, so maybe they'll figure, maybe we'll just figure it out. I don't, I don't think we're asking for a lot, just get kids back in class. I really don't.
I, I just hope we can realize that sometimes.
I agree.
When the numbers are going down.
I don't like it, yeah. It is what it is. If anything, I think it's gonna be more important that, just maybe the fans and the stands and some of these activities, these events where, you know, to be able to come there and be compromised.
Um, how long do we have to wait for people to go back?
We're just gonna recognize that.
I need for one or two students to pause it, to shut down.
Yeah.
We just can't.
Well, you know, you just look at, before, before you had your meeting to shut, send the teachers home, there was businesses in town already shut down. They had heard about it and had shut their doors before we would send the teachers home. I mean, that's how scared or whatever procedures that businesses are taking in this town, you know, what's gonna happen if we have, and I know there's, there's a lot of issues going on in this town, it's just. We don't have, if our kids come out with their teachers, what are they gonna do then? Are they ever gonna help them out?
I'd like to make a motion. Now we're gonna discuss it, or not, kill it or whatever, but the motion is to wear a mask during yellow, orange, and red, mandatory, which will include two five-day school weeks, or school days when we first start. In other words, two calendar weeks, or two five-days of school. Extend it still in yellow. If we go to green, then it's just recommended. So in other words, yellow, orange, red, they have to wear a mask. When we first start school, they're gonna have to wear a mask for two weeks, two calendars, or two five-day sessions, however you wanna look at it. But if we go to green after that, then it's just recommended.
Two weeks, right, two weeks mandatory, and if, if we drop.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, first two weeks.
That stays in the calendar still.
Brooke, did you have something?
I have a whole bunch of questions now.
We need to have a press conference.
It's up to you. You can do it now or you can do it later, whatever you wanna do.
Well, we got a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that one?
You try.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any more discussion?
Kyle and Heather, you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Sorry, had to unmute myself. Yeah.
We're not gonna go into a long-term discussion with you people, cause you had your five-minute chance to speak before, and I know I'm drawn out. Brooke, you ask a lot of questions. A lot of times they don't even pertain to how we're gonna go.
You do, you do understand how impossible it is to ask a question before I know what you're talking about though, right? I've argued that for, I've argued that for ten years.
But you know how gay it is to be wrong.
No, I don't, cause I don't agree with that rule and it's not a law.
Well, but you know it's still.
Yeah, cause CNA SB tells you that.
I'm not gonna let you ask all the questions you want. We're not gonna say anything, but if you have a question or two, I'll let you go.
I do. If the school's gonna mandate masks, are they gonna supply them?
Yes.
Okay. Are you gonna supply multiple sizes of them? I have a kid with a small head and the big masks don't fit.
We have two different sizes, one slightly smaller than the other, so if somebody wants to provide their own, absolutely can provide your own. It has to be approved by administration.
Is there, am I under the misunderstanding that the NCDHD plan that we've already accepted as our back-to-school plan says the teachers have to wear masks no matter what in green?
No.
It says that in the green column under face covering, does it not?
It does not mandate that teachers wear masks.
Can you pull that back up?
I think it does.
I'm pretty sure it does.
I think you're right.
I'm blown away. I agree it is.
All the time, even in green. So is that our, is that actually the rules that we have accepted, or is that just in the back-to-school plan that we have pronounced to all the parents? Maybe I could be, I could have read it wrong. I'm just asking.
No, that's what was voted on in the last board meeting and so, um, I updated that and sent it to Kyle and it was reposted.
Third or fourth page?
Recommended.
No, for teachers, it says required.
Cause you got really two different discussions here. What are you doing for your staff and what are you doing for your kids?
We already passed that, uh, last week, that teachers.
That was the time that our.
I just wanna make sure I was correct in saying that or thinking that.
And that would be, that's all the time.
Yeah.
Coaches, teachers, all being masks, all the time.
Yeah.
Unless they're in their room going out.
Right, planned period or away from students.
Right.
That's right, you discussed that. You're right.
Yeah, their coverings are required for teachers and staff. Face covering is highly encouraged, but not required for students and visitors and will be provided when requested.
So to let, to let the people know, they can come and ask for a mask if they cannot afford one or don't have one, and I know that sounds, it sounds, but it is what it is. You know you're gonna get asked. So, um, if there is a situation in a student, I, I watch these things pretty close in Emerson, they had this happen. Uh, they just quarantined that one classroom and sent them home with a distance learning option? Is that a possibility?
If students are quarantined, we'll still educate them.
I'm saying, rather than.
If somebody chooses, if somebody says they don't wanna come to school, they don't, they don't wanna come to school, they, if they have to wear a mask, we'd like a remote option, that's not an option.
Okay.
Now, it's gonna be a lot easier to handle if it's an elementary class and the whole class gets quarantined, cause you got one teacher teaching one class. But if you have one class in high school that gets quarantined and they go to seven other classes during the day, now you've gotta have seven other teachers.
And how is the whole class gonna quarantine if the whole class is in masks?
Well, I don't know. Brooke just said the thing.
What happened to the one?
In Emmer, in Emerson, they had a third grade class specifically, and they quarantined that entire class and all, is not, cannot come in the building for two weeks.
If they all have masks, that's.
I am like.
That won't happen.
If they all have masks on, it shouldn't happen.
I mean, these things are gonna come up, so as long as you're.
They won't come up though, if we're, everybody's in masks. We won't have to quarantine a whole class or anybody, except the, the positive case. So.
Okay.
If you go back to green, you'll get the case.
Right.
Then you might.
If they don't have.
If we didn't.
The students that maybe don't have masks. We're still gonna, we're still gonna recommend it in green. It's just. So hopefully we'll get, seventy, seventy percent of the kids will still.
I know how crazy all this stuff sounds.
But.
UNL, they're requiring kids to put masks on their instruments. And, you know, the real reason we couldn't go to church is because if you're standing in front of someone speaking, they have to be fifteen feet away, instead of six feet away. So are we gonna have like lines in the classrooms where the kids can't cross, or the teachers have to stay behind, or the, I mean, all these things could be done.
You know, there's gonna be, you're right, little Brooke, that, you know, when you bring a couple hundred kids into an environment where you can't social distance, uh, I mean, yeah, we're gonna put tape on the floor every six feet, right, for lunch, um, you know, just to give kids those visuals. Uh, but there will be, we, there's no way that we can provide for every set of circumstances. Uh, we're just gonna do the best we can.
So all this is leading to my last question, promise.
Yeah.
What is the school's policy on teachers, uh, striking or walking out?
Teachers cannot strike in state of arrest.
The NEA had a nice editorial that said you should if you, if you need to.
Yeah, they cannot strike in state of arrest.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
And it won't happen, um, with our teachers. Our teachers are committed, dedicated, and ready to come back to teach.
I just had a question about.
You just wanna say who you are?
Oh, sorry. Jeremy Katore.
Okay.
Um, I just had a question.
Um, I just had a question about a daughter going kindergarten and everything, and they don't recommend, or you don't have to mandate them out in recess, so they're running all around, one of them gets positive, um. Do you quarantine, I, I mean, I don't know how you, that's a shot for you guys, good luck trying to match who the heck they were, all over, running on, I don't know how that works.
Well, they'll, they'll, they'll ask about close contact, which determine how close they are for a certain length of time, and generally, uh, out of recess, they're never, you know, for, for a duration, a time around the same people, so, um. Yeah, and, and I, you know, the supervisors that are out there will, will manage that, and will, will encourage, you know, uh, small group play or individual play and, and, and a lot of movement.
Yeah.
Uh, so I would expect that, I think it'd be rare that we'd say, yeah, these kids were all hanging out for ten minutes at the same, you know, in, in the same group, and, and sure enough, that one ended up being positive. So, uh, that'll just be a management issue on our, on our supervisors.
And that might be your situation, where you got one class that's quarantined, you know, if you got third graders out at recess, one comes up sick, maybe that third grade class gets quarantined, and they all go home and, and learn online for two weeks.
One other thing, which is just a statement, I guess, from my question, but, uh, 'cause I, it's like living in a crystal, crystal ball, you guys aren't gonna know what to do, nobody's ever been through it, so I'm not saying I'm against a full mask, but, um, the whole yellow, green thing, it sounds like it's a knee-jerk reaction, you're gonna put mask on, it goes to green. You're gonna recommend it, so then you're giving a chance to build back up again, and then you're gonna put it back on, and then it's gonna go down, and then go, I mean, it sounds to me like a stair-step, uh, situation for a while, so I don't know if that's, that's just observation, but.
Yeah, I, I, you're right, that's, that could be the risk you take, you know, you get down into that, that area where you think you're safe, and, and all of a sudden you maybe lay off of the measures, but your Dr. Thor's, uh, motion is to go two weeks guaranteed, even if we go back in the green next Wednesday. And we're gonna still stay on, um, I think he's probably the one who's gonna do it, let's do it a good two weeks, regardless of whether the dealings up there.
Now, we're talking two weeks from the day the kids come, not the teachers.
So, and while Jeremy's here, and that'll be a good opportunity to mention, uh, uh, he's given us an opportunity during lunch to, to help move kids outside, so that our lunch period is probably our highest-risk time, to be honest, 'cause we're putting kids in, in a closer contact, and we're removing masks, so, uh, Jeremy's allowed us to bring over some, some picnic tables that we can put right outside of our cafeteria, and, and some of our kids, great, maybe as young as four, three, or so, this is a consequence, certainly high school kids will be able to go dine outside, so we certainly appreciate the city working with us on that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on the board? All right, I'll take the vote then, myself, yes.
I thought.
Yes.
You want it?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Okay, so some passes. Okay, now, I know our, uh, action item just says discuss masks, mask coverings, a couple other things, are we good with, with what we're doing at practice and the ball games yet? With masks, just coaches, I mean, we want players on the bench to wear masks, we want players on the bus, or not players, students on the bus to wear masks, mandatory, if that's mandatory at school, do we have mandatory at some other place?
Did they always come out and say, bench players have to wear masks, so?
Sure that, Kyle?
I thought I saw, at least at volleyball.
Um, I guess, right now, I mean, we're not requiring players to wear masks during practice, so I don't really see the difference in a player wearing a mask during practice and wearing a mask on a bench. Uh, but I do see the, the difference of people coming into our building, um, meaning that we can't social distance when we take admission, we can't social distance in our bathrooms, and we can't social distance at our concession stand. Um, so I mean, what I would recommend is that when people come to activities, they're in mask, uh, if they're able to social distance in the gym, they can probably take them off, uh, but more than likely, that's not gonna happen. Um, and in outdoor events, we still can't social distance in bathrooms, and we can't social distance at concession stands, so I would probably encourage that we wear masks in those two places, but if you're standing by your vehicle or around the fence watching the game, then by all means, you can take it off, 'cause you're away from everybody, but, um, I think anytime that we're in a high-traffic area, we should encourage masks during, during those activities.
So do you have a column for that in your conference, or please, house on your conference, or you can just put it in there so they know where they come here, that's what they have to do, or?
Yep, yep, that's, uh, the other thing that they would ask then is if we're going to provide masks, I did see one school, they just buy the disposable ones, and then they're charging a dollar per mask, if people forget them or whatever, then the school's not out, I mean, if they're providing masks for other teams and other people, things of that sort. Um, but what I would end up doing, like, I just, uh, pushed out to Taylor today, uh, wind side's requirements for what they have for us going there, and I'm gonna push that out to the parents tonight and send out an email, um, but they're saying they're only allowing three hundred people, spectators, that's athletes, coaches, everybody in the gym, um, and then they're gonna close the doors and turn away after that, uh, they're requiring masks in the gym, you have to wear them while you're watching the game, uh, people on the bench have to wear them. Um, some schools are different, if we go to Creighton, they're not requiring masks, uh, if you go to Osmond, everybody has to wear a mask inside, outside, Bloomfield's the same way, uh, but if you go to Laurel, nobody has to wear a mask, so, um, it's kinda all over the place within our conference, uh, but right now, for the conference, I have it set up that if people are coming here, I just have it down as wearing a mask because of the high-traffic areas, and, uh, but teams and athletes, I don't have wearing them at this point. But, uh, again, that's, that's, you guys can have that decision as well, I just need to know exactly what you guys wanna do with that. I just think if we're gonna have kids in school wearing masks, we should probably try and protect them from people coming in and watching as well.
I have a question.
Yeah.
My question is, so say, uh, one of the volleyball players or the football players come down with COVID, and they've been outside practicing, obviously not six feet apart, especially in football, so do you quarantine the whole football team, or how does that work? I guess if there's an expert there, somebody that can answer that, that'd be great.
Uh, the last I talked with the NSA, that we would not have to quarantine the entire team, um, as you're not within a six-foot radius for, in a, a really long time, I mean, our guys are spaced out quite a bit, uh, throughout practice and stuff, and then volleyball's kinda the same way, you're not going to be right around, and within that close proximity for a longer than fifteen-minute period. Um, so right now, they're not saying that you have to quarantine the entire team, but not to say that that could change.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Well, if you have to get out of that, that fifteen-minute or whatever, if you step out for ten seconds, is it start over, or?
How exactly that looks, I mean, I would say yes, but on the other hand, I mean, I can see your point that, okay, I stepped to seven feet for two seconds, and then go right back to it, so I understand that, too.
Um, when I was talking to the health department, and she basically said, uh, you know, it's fifteen minutes, um, within six feet, um, but if you question it, if you're saying, ah, this person, it, it might have been about fifteen minutes to put them on your close-contact list, so if there's somebody that's close, um, that they should probably be on the quarantine list as well. So I think that's where that person would fall, if that helps.
Well, I don't know, if we're trying to protect our students, our teachers here, to me, about the worst thing you can do is have people come in from out of town and not have to do anything. I think the fans should have to wear masks, especially inside, maybe, you know, football game with all the other teams on the other side of the field, they don't want a mask, I guess I don't have a problem with that, but if they go to the concession stand, I think they should put one on.
But, so how do you police that?
Yeah, I don't know, that's why you, you gotta make it mandatory for everybody, all the time. Uh, that way you can tell if they don't have one on, they're breaking the rule.
I mean, if somebody's not wearing a mask, it's gonna be heavier, it's gonna, you know, you'd make them wear masks for sure to work.
I read an article where they stopped the game in, in one town because the people weren't obliged by the rules, and they stopped the game until they did, or left.
You know, the same question was asked for in baseball season, too, with, you know, social distancing, grandparents weren't supposed to be allowed in.
It gotta, it gotta change.
You know, and, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a tough situation, and nobody wants to be the bad guy.
Just being social pressure is, is, is the, is the determining factor to create a degree.
Yeah.
And it's, it's how old somebody wants to get with somebody who's not wearing a mask if they're supposed to, so, um, I'm not gonna assign teachers to be down at football game, uh, roaming the, roaming the field, uh, and the grounds for people who aren't wearing masks. Um, I think like Kyle says, unfortunately, to announce it, you know, if you can't social distance, we need you to wear a mask, and here's some areas where we're gonna ask you, please put your mask on in your building, in these facilities, if you're in a concession stand. Uh, there's plenty of room at football field, plenty of room in our gym for probably every fan that wants to show up to, to social distance, unless you're a fan, you know, that would be different. You know, so I think, I think most everybody in the building gets it right now.
Especially parents and grandparents or the athletes, who are the ones, most of the ones in the playoffs, you know, on this game, they want their kids to be playing, so they're gonna move the app to.
I don't want to see athletes have to wear masks, I'm not in favor of that, I guess that'd be all right, you know, requiring the kid kind of fans, and everybody else, that could be, be strong with that.
Fair enough, we have to have a motion on this, and this discussion's good enough to, we want you to put in, you know, for visitors.
Um, hey, Mr. Schmidt, could you, um, share out our sheet, our Lewis and Clark conference sheet, um, to the board, so they can, so they can see, uh, what we've identified, so they know what, what we support, what we expect? Uh, I got looked at earlier today, there's certainly, you know, nothing on there that's unreasonable by, by any means, and again, the only thing is, though, it's from county to county, so for example, let's say, uh, Cedar County goes to orange. Um, and then we're either going there, or they're, let's say they're coming here, but they're, they're in orange, you know, are, are we gonna, uh, you know, well, it's not recommended. Iris, are we gonna say, well, if you're coming from this county, we're gonna have different expectations versus if you're coming from that county, which is in green? Uh, at, at any rate, you know, Kyle, would you share out our sheet?
Yeah, I'll share that out, um, the, the only thing I'll say with that whole thing is I wanna be consistent with everybody that comes here, uh, because that's gonna be a huge headache, trying to figure out who's and what and where at certain times, so I, I think we just be consistent with everyone, and, and the main thing that I wanna address, and I've talked with our coaches about, is when the game's over, everybody leaves. Um, we're not gonna be on the floor or go meet on the field and hug girlfriends and grandmas and grandpas, it's straight to the school, get changed, go home, and you can hang out once you get there, um, is a big thing, so try and eliminate that exposure there.
Dr. Thor said he'd be willing to be out there cutting people off, they don't want to be here.
Works for me.
Okay, Bob Lincoln Felder, yeah.
Is it just visiting teams, or is it our fans as well?
What's that?
Is it just visiting teams, or is it our fans as well?
Ours as well, our, visiting teams usually are better, they're usually better than getting out the door, yes, it's our own folks who like to linger, so.
Okay, 'cause. I'm just trying to be clear, I'm just clear with people. No, I mean for the, I mean for the mask requirements and all those other things, our fans are included in that as well, it's not just the visiting.
Well, they, under, you, yellow, I think, health guidelines says, access to the voting is restricted, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, and sign in by.
That's it, so. When you get in, doesn't matter who you are, they wear a mask.
Yeah, so we'll have to oblige by color code, even if this, if the one ours is, we'll have to change it to the color code.
Yeah.
I know it's not easy for you, Kyle, if you put the change in every week, then it doesn't. Or maybe it's easier just to mandate everybody wear a mask for now, so it'll be around.
What about the bus?
Do we have buses that they can't have enough distance?
Um, Bob is working on that, um, whether he was able to space them out so that, well, he will space them out as best he can, uh, so that family units will sit together, and animals will, um, separated by at least one seat.
Brunswick's will be the force.
Brunswick will be the one where he might have to peel some people off of that bus and give them a different route, um, you know, activity bus, uh, you know.
It's an eventual game, and I grew up, I did grow up.
Yeah, practice there, maybe.
Take our biggest bus and.
It's a big, it's a, you can sit by him for an hour, you can wear, if you have a bus, you gotta put it on, that's what it was. You didn't get in the first hour, you probably could get it.
But I suppose coaches would still be mandatory on the bus, it's a mandatory in other places.
Well, I know I can't vote, there's a motion on the table in a second, so either, you know, you have to, you guys have to pass it or change the, change it.
No, we voted on that, Kristen, that passed, quarter one.
Um, for school, yeah, for school hours.
Right now, we're talking about, yeah, the, the ball games and the buses, we're discussing, there's no motion on right now. Yeah, I don't know what to mean, if you have a full bus, if the kids get off the bus without a mask and walk into school and go and put a mask on, that doesn't make much sense to me, either.
What if we go to a school that requires their players to wear one? Do we have to put them on to play them?
If they require us to wear.
You follow their rules.
Yeah, we follow their.
Or we cancel the games, that's the equivalent.
We follow their, we follow their guidelines, so, so, yeah, they, as Kyle mentioned, you know, there's a, Lewis and Clark, every school has a spreadsheet, and then there's about fifteen categories, and when you come here, there's just a yes or no for this, 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 and this, so we'll know before we go anywhere, whether our kids need to be masked up when they come in the building.
And I'm sure it's the same for when we get into speech and one acts and, you know, all those types of things.
I guess if their team, if their team's been practicing with them on since week zero, and we come in week four and we have to wear them, our kids are gonna be like, they can't breathe when we play, how do you, you gotta cut a hole for your, your mouthpiece for your fifth pass?
They don't, they don't have to wear a mask, during competition, you don't wear.
You don't have to during competition?
No, no.
Okay?
It's just whether they're gonna require it on the bench.
You have to go, you have to pass them all over the field. So we're good then, basically, the visitors recommending they wear masks, or do they recommend it for?
I think you recommend it, see how it turns out. 'Cause most of the time, they're gonna be, I mean, like, football's a, they're pretty tall, three balls spread out.
Football, yeah, I would be.
Don't worry about how bad the ball, he's gonna go a little bit.
Well, I'm also wondering how many people are gonna come anyway? Parents or grandparents, and they're gonna spread out, you know, I don't know how much interaction that's gonna be, everybody's.
I don't know, in, in the heat of this, you know, that was during summer months, you, you down there at the ball fields?
Yeah.
You could hardly put it on a car down there, I mean, we had a hundred and fifty, two hundred people down there sometimes, in line at the concession stand.
It was the place to be.
It was, and it, it didn't matter in order to.
That's exactly it, that's, that's.
If people like them.
I, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna see the crowds tail off, I think, for a, a good volleyball game, or whatever, I think you'd have this as many, I believe.
Yeah, they pack them into baseball, and you know, if they ever wore a mask, you know, they got a long time, outdoor stadium.
It did work really well at baseball, if, that you could stay in your own car if you wanted to, so we had people park around the outfield, and they just stayed in their car and stayed away from everybody, and everybody was happy.
That's right, there's quite a few people that'd be in the outfield, didn't you?
Are we gonna line that up, like, around the football field, too, and be a possibility?
Yeah, stand long.
Made some reasonable parking spaces out there, people could stay in their cars.
Yeah.
And we moved our opposing leaders to the south side, so we were separate down there a little bit more, so it's just really a non-issue, I think, at the session stand, at the word, session stand.
I see an awful lot of videos of Walmart. If you're gonna have a confrontation, you're gonna get one. It's, I mean, let's be real. If you make a rule, somebody's gonna try to break it. You just need to be prepared for that.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I, I, uh, I think we've got a set guideline. There's all that that you.
Kind of monitor it by what our color is and what the sport is and how many, I mean, you might adjust it when you see how many people are COVID.
We just said the health department already has guidelines. They said, or in yellow, we restricts access to the. So I guess whatever staff gets there, we'd be done anyway. That's, that's good enough. So.
I mean, it could be changing back and forth a lot.
That's true.
Kyle, get it out.
Let's give them some, let's give them some flexibility now. They're hired for a reason, right?
Well, I don't know. He doesn't kind of look anymore.
One more day. But that being said, I mean, i- if you, I mean, you guys can email me, contact me if there's something that you could see that you don't like or whatever, like come and have a conversation or talk to me about it. Because it's a lot of things I, I don't see. So if there's something that needs chance to be fixed, um, be more than willing to sit down and talk with you guys and make sure that we get things right. Cause I want, I want kids to have a good experience because that's why we do it. So.
How many home meetings do we have before our next meeting, board meeting?
You want?
We don't have anything till next Friday, or Thursday probably. Do you have volleyball on Tuesday or not till Thursday?
We have volleyball this Thursday at Windside and then we have football here, uh, Friday. And then we have another JV football game here on Monday. And then we host the volleyball triangular on Tuesday. So we go four days in a row here coming up.
We have quite a bit going on before three weeks.
Yeah. Uh, but then after that, we don't have anything at home until September eleventh, when we have our homecoming game. So we go, we go pretty, we go pretty wild here for a little bit and then we get some time off.
Well, then we see how it goes.
Okay.
I'll let you run under that. Then what about buses? My last thing, talk about.
Here for eleven, Tom.
Yes. Leave that up to you and Bob and see what kind of schedule he comes up with the seating and, you know, if you got enough space and don't need masks and if they're too close.
Can we make one bus wear them and not the other?
I suppose if you can make one classroom wear them and give another classroom, or eight, because of the population, it's not quite different buses. Probably knowing just the one bus and, yeah, probably.
It'd be a different standard.
So you can't.
Yeah.
I'll check with Bob and see what his numbers look like. I haven't talked to him in a week or so, uh, since he started, kind of like those roots. But, yeah, we could easily be prepared to, you know, have, you know, get out of the mask on the bus. You know, I expect to keep it, you know, at the minimum a day, but, um, you know, but there could be, we have one bus where, you know, we, we want kids to wear them now. I'm not gonna have a bus where I pull over on the side of the highway if this kid doesn't wear it. So it's, it's one of those where it's, you know, the kid put the mask on, you know. And we're just gonna get down the road and drop kids off, you know. So, uh, then I will check on that tomorrow to see if we've got that service. So we are well past the comfort level of we're able to kind of distance them.
So I know there's a lot of kids that jump around a lot on buses. There's a lot of rumor on buses in the past.
To sit down and get in.
Drivers don't, you know, worry about it too much because there is a lot of, but are we gonna be more strict as drivers and make kids sit?
Can't. That's all I can, all I can say, really, you know, continue to be fast, you can't.
I mean, they gotta drive first.
Kids bad enough, you know, if, if it was a perfect, you know, they call it wasn't.
Hey, does anybody else have anything else they want to discuss? Board meeting, that one last board meeting. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna call it here. Thanks, guys. Hey, Krista, did you get any of that?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Hey, no problem. Glad it finally started working, Krista.
Uh-huh. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. See y'all.